I'll wait here. You're done now?
Yeah.
You too.
How funny.
Yeah. Yes.
What's up, bud? You see? Wow. That could be a fun job, doesn't it? It's all done. Should have been printed in that cookie paper. That was that. Oh, my. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's right, Dan. Oh. No, no. You're on your couch. Just fucking back. She's happy. I mean, you're trying.
I just usually play with her, you know?
Oh, young man, how are you?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm good.
You're doing all of that.
As a good one. And you like that? So we need to start.
Yeah. Yeah. Hey.
Yeah, I've been seeing some work coming up and it's great because recycling is such a such a, uh, of march on by oil, gas, plastics, you know, that they're going to be recycled. And it is. And we were shipping it all over to China, too. You know? So like right now, if you want to make it for recycling or like you don't have these characters, maybe run it in. They can't find it.
Yeah, they are. You don't have the seven year thing.
I don't understand the difference between teaching and
Do you want to do the bathroom? This year.
No, I don't do anything.
You know? So what happened?
This guy will read the matters.
All of the, all of the so why haven't I left him three times? I need to go get someone else. You need to. I need to. So I love them. You. Obviously. Isn't that first? Oh. I'm tired of it. Okay. One of those. Now, so I'm more okay. I just started putting my wash. Give me a minute. This is the ladies' room. That's the men's room.
It better be good, doesn't it?
No. You can't pull my pictures.
Yeah, I got you. Hold on, please. I got this.
I called this special meeting of August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four to order at sixteen a.m. Frank, will you leave me some time to think?
I'd like to be just to clarify of your United States of America and to represent all which has one nation and God in this world with every intention.
Rowcall, please.
Ms. Proton?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Brahaus?
Here.
Ms. Gilda? Mr. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Thorne?
Here.
Madam Lear?
Here.
Uh, can I get approval of agenda as is?
May I launch you to approve the agenda as well?
Next minute.
Rowcall, please.
Ms. Proton?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahaus?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Can I be questioned something?
Okay.
Can we get some kind of an update on financials?
Did we?
No, can we?
What is it that you need?
Well, if we're going to be talking about stuff that's on the new part of the agenda, uh, utility position in federal that involves any mines.
Uh, I think if I'm not mistaken, on a special meeting, you can't amend the agenda.
Yeah, we've been told that before, but we change it in one time.
Well, that's just what I read. The special board meeting, we can't. Remand?
Whatever you decide.
We can.
What was the question? Yes.
Yes or no, proof of the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Okay, reports. Utility.
I spent the last five days going over, uh, the Crump wells, one, two, and three. And I just got a reading to each of you on, uh, this will show the amount of water that we're using from the three wells. We have been running just, uh, Crump one and three. I today turned off, uh, I turned on Crump two and turned off Crump three to give the pump rest. And, uh, every three, four days, it would be recommended to alternate these pumps. We've had, uh, some problems with the, uh, chlorine coming through. It seems like, uh, at one point, we were hitting real low readings on it. As of today, the pump was, uh, the chlorine reading was one point ten, which is fairly decent. I'm trying to bring it up to a two point oh. So, and I should have that in the next couple of days. Uh, I don't have any information yet on the, uh, Mauricio well. When still looking for details on it, see whenever we're going to be able to add the pipe to it and get it back to where we're using it. Yeah. We're needing to have a licensed waste and freshwater operator. There's, um, Jared Wilson, who has made an offer to work under his license here by the hour. Then we have another, we have two gentlemen on, besides him, that we would probably need to contact. The CDPHE requires that we have a licensed operator. And I haven't personally spoke to them. I have spoke to the, uh, Colorado Rural Water District and done a lot of information on them, how to go to proceed from here. And it looks like everyone's willing to work with us to get this fixed without a lot of problems. But they are going to, we, we still have to keep up with it as we go. Uh, I have a website that has a list of current operators for the water that we can go through. And let's see. Bob has been cleaning the sewer pond drains. There's two of them there that has to be done each, each day. Been keeping up with the trash and cleaning the park, the moat, because of Labor Day weekend coming up. And there's a link for the, um, operators from CDPHE that if anyone wants it, I'll, well, it's on, if anyone wants this, I'll, uh, give it to them. There's, this link explains exactly what an ORC operator is and the responsibilities and then our responsibility for it. They've got a contact for, uh, uh, wastewater side. It's Greg Coulter, who is very willing to help us. He gave us, uh, or Linda and I a lot of information the other day on where we need to go with this to get to where we're, where we need to be. We're still a ways off from it. Uh, the park restrooms have been, we're trying to open them up by nine a.m., closing them by, uh, seven or eight. Right now, they're clean and open after meeting. I'll run over and close them. The, um, I'll make sure I didn't miss anything on this. We do need to buy some diaphragms for the chlorine pump. There are little pieces of, uh, tubing that we need to have on hand there because it, it appears like those could get plugged out fairly quick. And I couldn't find any in the shop. And they should be at the, uh, chlorine pump itself. So I'm, I'm gonna say we don't have any. And we do have, there's, uh, other than the one person that's been working on the Mauricio well, I've got one more person in case they don't want to finish with this. I don't know, I haven't found out since, I haven't contacted CDPHE. So I don't know what, uh, timeline we're on. Last I heard, it was thirty days. And I don't know how much of that time's expired. Cindy Dully came up with an idea for a bake sale, uh, for, with proceeds going to paint the building out here and kind of straighten it up. Along with asking the art class at the high school if they would do a mural around the ADA ramp. We still have a roof leak at the community center that needs to be addressed, whether it be through insurance or whatever, but this has been going on for quite a while. There's, excuse me. There's, uh, some people have tagged the wall behind the, uh, grandstand out here in the park. We really need to, uh, get some paint or do something to cover those things up. I know that there's a surface of punch list. I haven't been able to find it. And going through inventory and the tools, it, from what I'm finding, it looks like I'm not finding some tools that there's, uh, that I found on maintenance phone that have recently been bought. And there's things like, uh, stand up work lights, uh, some uh, hand, battery powered hand tools. And so I'm, I'm still looking for those.
Can I ask a question, Vern?
Yeah.
You guys been working on the inventory of the town assets at all? I know you've been so busy just dealing with the maintenance stuff.
It would, I mean, Frank's been in there, kind of going through what we have. I have spent a lot of time in there. I've been, like, every hour up this pump trend.
Okay. It's really important twofold. Number one, Jim Ray needs it for the audits. And number two, as, and we'll get into this here in a little bit, when we start rebuild the books at least back to twenty twenty-three, I'll be able to get that inventory list of anything bought since the beginning of twenty twenty-three. And so if you've got stuff that's missing that was recently purchased, we can kind of compare, uh, those notes.
It's kind of hard to take inventory because we got stuck here. The same's over there.
Right.
It's scattered all over. There's no, it doesn't.
Yeah, it's like will be a fascinating, there's a lot to it.
Right. Um, do you guys need some help with, like, some inventory sheets or anything?
Uh, that would be helpful, but.
Uh, everything in order, then we could count and everything, take inventory of what we have and.
So just so you know, that is one of the things holding up the audits getting finished is inventory.
If we, uh, get some maintenance people in, I'll hit, probably too long. I can start on inventory possibly in one day, but it's, it'll take a full week.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. It's just we need to get started.
Yeah, we changed the combination on the locks on the, uh, shop over here, the bathrooms. Well, I haven't changed those yet. The, uh, all the wells, I put new locks on. There's a new, a new combination on the sewer pond. Going through this, at one time, I thought I seen four remotes for the overhead door. Yesterday, it seems like I could only find three of them. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have to change the code on that. Frank and I tried unplugging one of them here in the back. And I don't know if there's a battery backup on it or something, but it still opens with, with the thing unplugged. So it's got to have a secondary power to it. But we need to change the common, the, um, setting on so the, the three remotes that we have will be the only ones that work. Will volunteer to, uh, do some vinyl signs for the town vehicles if the council wants me to. It's simple on the door, kind of abular, on the side of, uh, the emergency maintenance number and possibly numbering the town vehicles so that we could do, uh, reports on them, maintenance reports, when, what's done, you know, and keep a better log by number on the truck.
We can put that on the agenda for, um, next regular meeting.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I took that, uh, truck.
Right.
And cleaned it. It took me about three hours to clean it. I had that much dirt inside the truck. I mean, there, uh, no, nobody has ever cleaned it or nothing.
Thanks, thanks.
Then I took it to, uh, I took it to Walmart. I had the oil changed. And they checked it out, this and that. We have a check engine light on it, um, which we'll probably have to, I didn't have time to address the whole thing, but it, it looked like it needs, uh, a little bit maintenance, like, uh, the serpentine belt looks bad. We're gonna have to change that before it breaks and, uh, the latches on the, on the back, on the tailgate don't work. There, just some pins and that, that minor adjustments, this and that. The doors, pins are coming out and the doors don't close right, but all in all, but that leak we were looking at, I thought maybe it was on the front, but it ain't on the front. It's, looks like it's on the back by the oil filter. So we're gonna have to check, see what we get, uh, somebody to look at it, see what we can find. It's that oil leak. But other, other than that, it goes pretty good and that just needs a little DLC.
Is this the new truck?
No. The old white one. You know how we're trying to save on gas? And so if, uh, gonna hope they can use that to haul trash and do the town stuff instead of the newer truck.
Right.
Frank, do you need this or?
No, no, I didn't. I just wanted to show you what
Okay.
that, um, report on that. What was done on that truck?
What's the year on that truck?
Two thousand.
Anything else?
That's it. That's paid for.
Okay. Thanks.
The roads at the Crump wells need to be graded real bad. The town had an agreement with them that we would take care of that. A gentleman that works for county, Glenn Gaynor, has offered to, uh, use his services. He's willing to come in and grade the roads for them. Uh, and, uh, it's my understanding, we're gonna have to get a sprawl table for that to, to make, to make it possible. And those roads are getting bad. Uh, the guy's got a legitimate complaint. We need to do something there. And then.
One day at a time, Vernon. One day at a time. That's all I could say. You know, we don't, it's not like we have all these employees.
Uh, said, well, that's why the council's here and I'm telling you what's wrong. I, I'm that way.
Anything else?
No, but.
Hey, thank you. Uh, old health insurance in Monaco isn't here. Do you have anything new to add to it?
No, basically just, I believe the insurance was canceled as of August fifteenth, so I mean, Sarah's looked into the one and it is whatever, um.
The care.
Yeah, Affordable Care Act is what the quote Sarah got from the guy last week. And with such a short time, we weren't able to get quotes for anybody else, but I think that, um, he told Sarah, if we are gonna do that health insurance, it needs to be done by Friday, like the enrollment. If not, then she'd have to wait until October to enroll again, so.
I don't believe that's true. The Affordable Healthcare Act, any, any sort of life change, like loss of coverage, you could pretty much go in and sign it anytime. Is this a broker you're talking to?
Um, it's the same as if the, it's whatever she gave you last.
Okay. Yeah, that might just be a broker's sales pitch, um. I mean, cause you could go in individually and sign up for the Affordable Healthcare Act on your own at pretty much any time, whenever you have a life change, which includes loss of any insurance.
Coverage. And yours might be able to take effect right away if you find somebody.
I have to do it by Friday or two hours.
Even if it's not that company?
Maybe.
I, I, most companies will start for the new year and they start their enrollment like next month.
But, um, open enrollment, I believe for, for the general public starts November first. However, she's experienced that life change, what makes her eligible that, um, so yeah, if she wanted it by the first, then by Friday makes sense. But, you know, if we can't get it together by then, she could still certainly, um, enroll and have it start on, on the fifteenth. I believe you can get coverage starting mid-month. It doesn't have to be on the first.
I will see if I can send you the number tomorrow. Uh, this lady in Springs, you can call. She might be able to help you.
Okay. What does that cover? Who's all covered under that plan?
It's just a family plan for Sarah. There's three people on her plan.
There was a care credit for the three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. There's five.
That's if five people were five people.
There's three in my family plan. And then, yeah, she, she gotta vote for me just in case my health insurance were to need to change. So the three something is right now for a total of five, three on Sarah's and then two on mine. So it's like three, whatever, sixty-seven. I'm not sure exactly, but. And that was just a call. I, I have no intention right now of switching to my healthcare, but we figured since we were getting quotes as I came up, we wanted to know the worst case that the town would be looking at.
Okay.
Was the town administrator covered under any insurance?
No. I didn't see any name on there. The only one I saw was Sarah and her family. That was all that was covered on there.
And do we need to discuss about what the employee, employer portion is?
Uh, no, we're gonna have to wait to see what insurance she finds and then it's gonna have to come back to the board.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to quick books.
Okay, um, I know that there's still lots of concern about this, but I've, uh, talked to a few more people in some bookkeeping groups that I'm in that I specifically that I specifically asked if anybody in the group who was doing municipal bookkeeping on QuickBooks. And I've got two responses on top of Nicole with LaVita, who did the books for LaVita that said QuickBooks can absolutely handle town bookkeeping. And they said that they would offer me some additional free consultation on top of whatever Nicole, you know, we can't afford her very much, so. We're ready to go. I'm ready to start this on Friday.
And speaking of QuickBooks, did you make copies of that? If you'll go to bookkeeping service agreement. That is what Angela and
Her name is Nicole.
Okay, and Nicole proposed.
So basically, under this, it's the service agreement and she's fine with this and I can, you know, provide the emails. And I think I have copied Sarah and or Linda on it. Just she she doesn't have quite as much availability as she thought she was gonna have when we first discussed this. But she could definitely offer a couple of hours here and there for some consultation. And I know enough about QuickBooks that, you know, I just need some initial setup on the chart of accounts. And some guidance with the fund accounting, which I already kind of have done a little research and understand the basic principles behind that. So, I mean, we're ready to go, starting Friday, start rebuilding these books from 2023 going forward. So if nothing else, we will have a clear picture of what has happened to the cash accounts in the last year and eight months.
That is a part of what they're doing to get the audits cleared up. They have to redo the books.
And starting from 2023 forward. Like I said, I mean, I've been suggesting since the start that we need to go back further. But at this point, I just don't even know if it would make a difference because the last audit was completed in 2018 and Jim Ray is still even saying that he's finding issues going back to 2016. So, you know, you're talking about rebuilding the books, you know, going back, you know, pushing eight years, nine years at that point. So, you know, he's still, I questioned him again last night. I'm like, look, Jim, what what else do you need? You know, where are we at on this punch list of yours? You know, still need the inventory and he's, you know, doing some other things this week. It's hard to get him to, you know, pinpoint and answer. So, but my part, what I know I can do is I can figure out where the cash has gone in the last year and three quarters. So I'm proposing, I'm thinking we'll probably use Nicole for hour and a half, two hours on Friday to get started. And then we'll, you know, as we're going and training, you know, we'll get together punch lists. Again, you know, for any questions or additional training. And then we can reach out to her again, set up another appointment for another hour or two. I can reach out to some of these other consultants, some of the groups. And then I also think, Erlinda, you and I should sit down and you should probably get some training on this too and be a user on the system. You know, some of what we discussed this morning.
Right, and I offered to come in and help. Maybe if it's posting that I have to do, I can access some of the information that is needed to help her move along so that we we have to get this done. The services that Nicole Marion is offering is general bookkeeping, bank reconciliation, details, general ledger, financial statements, payroll and tech registers and whatever.
I think we just need to put under other consulting. That's all that she's going to be doing for us at this point is consulting. We will be doing all of that other stuff and I'm, you know, perfectly capable of doing that other stuff. Like I said, there's just probably gonna be a few things on the opening entries when we enter those opening balances of where they need to go. And that kind of again goes back to Jim Ray and bucks. Once we get that, we can start pulling the banking in and just we need all the bank statements from, you know, January one, twenty twenty-three going forward. All the invoices that have been paid. And it goes pretty quick. Once you've got everything kind of set up. It's pretty easy to go back and do catch-up cleanup, you know, for a year or two. You could probably have it done if, you know, a team effort, probably have it done in a couple of weeks.
I got a question for you. We're gonna be using QuickBooks. What's that gonna cost?
Thirty days free and then you get fifty percent for three months. It runs a hundred bucks a month. So it'll be fifty bucks a month for three months and then it goes up to a hundred dollar a month. It's up to three users.
And somebody knows how to install it?
There is no install installation. It's an online program.
Really?
You used to be able to get QuickBooks desktop where it was a software installation. But like everybody else, you know, all these companies are pushing for subscription versus being able to buy one-time software. You know, downloads that you can keep locally on your computer. Now everybody wants subscriptions and that's what QuickBooks and Intuit is really pushed for.
So the information that you're gonna enter into Aglo, for Aglo, is gonna be available somewhere else out of the building?
Yes, but you would have to have login. It's secure logins. So there's gonna be a handful of people, you know, myself. And after I get done, you can even take me off of it, but Erlinda and then the office personnel will have access.
Getting back to this bookkeeping service. Item number. X one X.
Additional terms?
Yes.
You should not participate in any financial audits of the client's books.
I assume.
She's consulting us on how to set up her fund accounting, on how to run the books for municipal fund accounting. And what's the best way to do that? Again, you know, there's certain things in accounting that accounting is accounting is accounting. But depending on the business, the industry, there might be certain things specific. And with municipal accounting, it's fund accounting, you know, the general fund, the water fund, the gas fund. So we need to just make sure that we're setting it up properly. And so then when we're spending money, it'll basically be set up in QuickBooks by project. And so there'll be a project for the water fund, there'll be a project for the general fund, be a project for the sewer fund, project for the gas fund. So then as revenue comes in or grant money comes in or expenditures go out, it'll be assigned to that project. And then that's how it separates the reports for your balance sheets and profit and loss. Plus, you can, of course, run vendor reports, you know, see who he's paid what, you know, to date. You can run comparisons, balance sheets from previous year. You can run, you know, comparisons from the previous day. You can see percentages of dollar amounts of change. You know, it stores pretty everything, I mean, everything and that Assist currently does, but in a much more user-friendly fashion. That I don't think she's gonna require. I'll double check, yeah, because she cut back on what she was originally had offered to do. She her mom, you know, she has a senior mom and so she's gonna have to be traveling back and forth to Denver. So I don't think she's gonna require that, but I will double check before we start with her on Friday and send this over.
I just wanted to comment today.
Okay. Okay, all right.
She gonna be required for us to pay her.
No, no, so I'll be remote. We'll be doing this teams, so she won't be here on site. So with that being said, we just need to touch on the second part of it. As far as utility billing, did you get a chance to look into those utility billing softwares that?
One sent me some information. They are very, very good.
Okay. So, yeah, definitely check into that other one. And like I said, we're not switching anything at this point, you know. And maybe it's even we run QuickBooks along with just Assist utility billing and reading, you know. I mean, maybe that's the option, but we just cannot stay on the Assist for the accounting. Because, I mean, Robert Half CPAs can't, you know, decipher the information that's input. Part of that was the user inputting the information, but it's a very difficult system to navigate. And so if Jim Ray is having problems with it, Robert Half is having problems with it, we're having problems with it. It just makes sense to go to something that's much more user-friendly. You know, and and clear, easier.
Nothing with the utility billing. When we use QuickBooks, we're gonna have to manually enter everything from utility billing onto the QuickBooks. I don't even take a payment through.
Yeah, well, well.
They manually do that because they don't.
Okay, you guys keep frightening me on this. We're not gonna be doing that until I mean, we've got a full year before we even get up to current, even to this year, you know. So we're gonna just be entering past entries at this point. And so we're not gonna get to the point where we're gonna have you doing double entry. We'll have this solution figured out by the time we get to that point, so.
See, wait, for the next six months, maybe. I'm just picking that one up. You'll still be on the old system. It's just, but you will be learning QuickBooks at the same time.
Have you gone to, at least to find out what software?
No, but she gave us the bill last week, what's currently coming up and what the breakdown was. I didn't bring it with me. No, I mean, this is the first time I'm seeing this. I just got the package tonight, so. Was there something that you saw in here?
Well, there was that one, you know, that you mentioned about that guy from Trinidad. Where he came in and did the operating systems and all that stuff.
The computer kernel or whatever. Is that one?
Yes. Was he involved in the accounting process at all?
He's just our IT.
What's the difference between him and the services that Rivera was offering? Or is that the same person? The gentleman that was on.
That's for a website.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that ADA's name and we need to keep on top of that because that's a big bug in fine. If we don't get that upgraded, so that's gotta be on our current budget, you know, of emergency stuff to do. If somebody could come back on that.
I think for now, what, we'll take QuickBooks. It's about rebuilding and starting for 2023.
Twenty twenty-three going forward.
And once we get that plugged in, we will maybe have one audit. But we'll plug along. I tell the IT, if she was open on Friday or on a Saturday, I would come and help her.
I think not this weekend. I need some downtime.
Again?
Again, you can't keep off, yeah. I mean, I had downtime since the start of this. I mean, it's been ten, eleven, twelve hour days. But maybe the following weekend, the following Saturday, then I could come in and.
That's probably gonna be my downtime then.
Uh, no, you know.
No, I get it. Yeah, definitely.
So anyway, so, yeah, again, just a final note on that. I will double check on that three hundred and fifty dollar retainer. Since she's reduced it, maybe a hundred dollar retainer, see if she deals into that or something. Would you guys be okay with that? A hundred dollar retainer?
Right?
Do I need to make a motion that we're approving this or anything?
Does anybody have any questions?
I like what I'm hearing. I wanna say that.
Okay. And can we get a motion to approve the bookkeeping services with Nicole Marion?
I made a motion.
Wait a second.
Brokaw?
No protests?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brohass?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorndyke?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. I'd love to draw your interest.
You're welcome. You can get there.
Go ahead and take the weekend though.
Thanks.
Oh, right.
And Monday. Okay, the next thing on our list is interviews for utility position under new items. Who normally handles interviews, plays HR for the town?
Board.
Board does?
Yes. The only thing that we haven't been doing is owning references. Stephanie was doing that for a while.
Yeah.
Are you still doing that?
I haven't called any of these references at all. We ready to start? First person on the list would be Robert Lee. Alroy? Alroy?
Did we announce that we were doing interviews here tonight?
She called.
Okay. So he's not here. He's not here? No show?
Joshua, review.
No show?
Dave Kelly. I'm sorry, Mr. Dave Kelly.
Sir David going? Who wants to start? Um, I just, yeah, I mean, I understand that you've been in this position before, right?
Yes, I have.
Is that on board?
Yes, I have.
Yeah. Vern, do you have any specific questions for him?
I know Dave and I know his work history, so. We'd like to bring out that he has worked for the town. He's worked for the town and personally, I know that he's he's got big references here. And he's trained with all the heavy equipment and sent for money.
Are there certifications? What certifications do we need?
Wires.
Just the wires?
The big thing that you previously held the license for.
No, ma'am.
Yep.
I was going to get them, but circumstances is where I left the town.
Okay. Would you be willing, if you were hired, would you be willing to get a license?
Oh, yes. Now, is this gonna be at my cost or the town?
The town pays for it, correct?
Yeah.
What is that cost?
It doesn't matter. I'm not, no, no. I think, all right, I'm not, no, no. I was told on the meeting on Friday, uh, that we had to hire. I mean, it's not even.
Right. I've just had curiosity if anyone knew what the cost was.
So, and so right now, the town would pay for his water license and I'm not really sure. Bernie, do you remember if the gentleman mentioned how long it takes to get one? Or would that depend on Dave?
It depends on how fast they can, well, I had to even take the test, but I'm still interested in what does it cost us?
He has to apply for a test license for small.
CD P H E set.
Would you please, she's gonna go check and see how much it, but I do know that we can rent a license that you would work under.
Yeah.
So that's going to be.
What about the license from the previous, um, employees that turned out herbal?
He took his license with him, so that's how.
This right here, you're, uh, you applied for a maintenance supervisor.
Yes, I did.
Right now, we needed a, a maintenance worker, not a supervisor. You know, we don't have nobody else to, at this time.
I was under the impression we were looking for two part-time.
He's gonna be in charge of himself.
But.
No, I'm not.
We still have to get, even if it's a part-time employee. We have to get somebody if, if he should be hired, then he have, I mean, he can't work for seven days or we have to do something.
So we're looking at two part-time, Dave, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, I do. I call CD P H E myself. I've talked to some of the councilmen, not everybody. There's a clause in there that if you're under thirty-three hundred, uh, people in your town, you can get a Class S water and sewer license.
And what's a Class S?
What it is, I don't exactly know, other than it's good enough for the town or, uh, if it's under thirty-three hundred, thirty-three hundred population.
Small communities.
Overall.
Community.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I can check on it again tomorrow.
And Dave says that you have all kind of heavy duty equipment experience?
Fifty years. I'll run anything you got to keep for.
As long as it runs.
As long as it runs. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Including excavators, drag lines, I don't care. I know I didn't put that on there, but that's what I was trained for in the military and I got over fifty years worth of experience.
Would you, would you be willing to work part-time just till our funds get better or whatever? You know what I mean, uh?
Put a time limit on it, Frank. Put a time limit on it.
Well, I really don't know. Maybe twenty hours a week or something like that for right now. It's just the money that we don't have the funds.
I have to say with, if you ask Vernon with, and that's with hope that he's had, correct, Bernie, the hours that he's put in, in just a few days.
Well, we've been, yeah, what, what the town needs is really will be two part-time and it's will be twenty hours a week apiece because I believe, Dave, you can't or do not want to work weekends, so.
No, sir. I will not work weekends. If that depends on.
Time off is, you know, it's, but, and I, I think I did mention that we part-time, didn't I?
No. I asked you and you said forty hours a week.
I didn't know it was part-time either. Did you? Did you, Bob?
What?
Did you know it was part-time?
No.
I had heard part-time.
I didn't hear it.
Let me. How did?
Let me. Go ahead, Vern. You're the councilman.
I'm talking myself into trouble here, so.
No, I.
I thought we had discussed it in an open meeting, actually. I think it came up during one of the last couple of meetings, hiring two part-time people, I believe.
It is in our last one, but I'm into that. I'm so in trouble all the time anyway.
Can I say something else? Your last employee made twenty-two dollars an hour.
Correct. And what are you asking?
Twenty-one. He doesn't, I worked with him before. So I know what got done and what didn't get done.
Okay.
Okay? I will get it done, but I'm gonna get paid for it. I can run any machine the town owns, any of them, regardless. I'll run that galleon you have over there. I can work on the galleon. I can work on the truck that Frank was just talking about. I have maintenance qualifications too, but I did not put it on there. After fifty years, you learn to change the oil in cars, trucks, maintenance, equipment, everything. You've got the mayor pro temp. Have I ever run your blade, Gerald?
Yes, sir.
Did I break it?
Yes, sir.
Have I run your backhoe?
Yes, sir.
There you go. That's your mayor pro temp. And that's all y'all have is a grader. And I also have Class A C D L license. I'm certified in a eighteen wheeler. I can go down there if Gerald would hire me and he could put me in one of them eighteen wheel drive or eighteen wheel trucks. Yes.
Wait, 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 excuse me, sir. We're doing the interview here.
I don't have to. I know. He's my neighbor. But anyway. Dave, you know, you know what we're up against here.
Oh, I do.
And, and, and I would really like to have you full-time and, and I think we're gonna get to that point. We're just a little bit tight right now. And I don't know exactly what we can do, but we'll work things out and, and come up with.
Would you be open to like a trial period of twenty hours a week for maybe, let's say, sixty days or something? And then we can revisit it? Or are we set on hiring somebody full-time now? Because if he doesn't wanna work weekends, then we don't have that weekend coverage. So that's why it makes sense to maybe, you know, do two part-time right now. Somebody willing to work weekends, at least on a temporary basis, like, uh, Gerald said. Would you be open to that?
If I work, I'll work every other weekend for two hours. That's all it takes to pick up the trash, check the pumps, go down and clean that stupid sewer. That's what I'm saying. The people that you had before.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I think that would help, you know, somebody willing to, you know, um, if he's willing to alternate some weekends with another individual, um, we're still gonna need some additional coverage. Or maybe even put him thirty hours and the other person, you know, fifteen hours or something a week, you know. I mean, I think there's, there's things that we can.
Would you consider thirty hours?
I'll consider, let me, to help the town, and this is the only reason. I've got six, five people up here setting, well, no, three, six, seven people. I'll help this town out. But the first time somebody messes with me, I'm done. I don't need to work here. I'm here because I live here. I wanna help this town get out of this mess. And it wasn't me that put you there. It wasn't none of these board members that put us there. But what I'm saying, the board members need to stand up and be, uh, take the reins, take the ability to handle the business of this town. That's what I'm saying. I know, I know.
Maybe that's what we're trying, that's our goal.
So would you consider thirty?
Thirty hours?
Dave, what do you think? Now, what do you think?
I'll do the twenty hours. I'll do the twenty hours. I'll do them of a morning. That's five hours a day for five days a week. Okay? I still want the same amount of money. Then there again, I don't need insurance. I've got my own. But what I am saying, I know this board has certain positions because I'd like, I was on the board, so I know. We have clauses that this board can come around and ask what I'm doing, but because of the lawyer that we used to have said it was harassment and that's illegal.
No, we're not supposed to be doing that.
You can, I don't care, Bob. You can come and watch me dig a hole and if I can't dig it in fifteen minutes, tell me you lost the backhoe, okay? I mean, that, it, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, if you're gonna interview me for this position, if I can't do it, then tell me.
Dave, do you have any problems with, like, Vern and I are maintenance, but maybe we, you could tell us that you can't make it to the pond down there and if we would cover for you, you know, says give us a call and we could pick up a little bit of the slack for you.
You won't need to. I'll guarantee you, you won't need to do that.
Well, if you do.
Yeah, I'll call you.
Any problems with that?
No.
I mean, you know, we don't wanna go stepping on your, over you, this and that. We wanna work together.
I know that.
We wanna work together and we, this way, if you have, you, you need somebody picking up the trash, give Vern or me a call. I mean, such a light though.
Yes.
That's all that I.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
All I'm, Dave, all I'm gonna say is, you know, the relationship you and you have.
Oh, yeah.
And you know, any day you can walk up, up the street and tell me what you need and.
Oh, I know.
You know that. I don't have to remind you.
But I do wanna ask this. When's starting time? Nine o'clock, eight o'clock, seven o'clock?
You know, I, I really don't know. I know for the office, I know those hours, but as far as maintenance, I don't know.
I think in the past, it's been eight, if that's, if that's doable, I mean, I think we're fine.
I mean, if you wanna sleep in and come in and.
No, I, no. There is no sleeping in with me. No. But anyway, yeah.
No, I'm just saying, I, I'm not really sure as to the hours for the maintenance person.
Okay. Eight till four. Eight till four is eight hours, right?
Yeah.
With thirty minutes worth of lunch. That's thirty, four-thirty then. Okay, eight to four-thirty. That is eight hours. If I work four hours, eight till noon, twelve o'clock, that's four hours, correct? Five days a week, that's twenty hours. So I wanna work from eight o'clock AM till twelve AM, PM, whatever you wanna call it, at noon. Five days a week. I will go and I'll get trash. Now, I know Virg, or Vern has, Virgil, wow, he must be thinking of them. Anyway, Vern has been writing all of the stuff down that he's doing every, he has to stop and do all of that. I know how to do residuals. I know all of that stuff, but I don't have a license. Now, I'm not gonna stick my neck out and get it chopped off.
No, I doubt some of my concerns is to get a water license.
And, well, if you can get somebody that I can work under, would be fine. And I will get the water license. I was willing to pay for it myself, but it's gonna be under different circumstances.
Town pays for it.
Yeah, but.
Unless you wanna pay for it and then the town reimburse you at a later date.
Uh, me and the wife was talking on that, yeah.
Pay Tuesday for.
It kind of like take me off.
Okay.
No, uh, it's something that. The town pays for it.
Okay, but.
We borrow from Gerald.
And if I, if this, if this doesn't pan out for more than twenty hours within a certain length of time.
We will revisit it.
I will be, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that's.
Make a motion that we hire Dave.
Well, we have to finish interviewing.
Yeah, you gotta finish interviewing.
Hey, one, one motion that, uh, because in the past, they've been, there's been a dollar raise whenever you complete probation. Then there's been a dollar raise when you get your license.
But that's after, I know that.
Okay, well, I wanna make sure that.
Well, I think it's ninety days.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, I think it's ninety days, but that's all right. That's, I, I, whenever that gets to that point, I'll remember.
Well, I wanna make sure that you're new.
Dave, if you're hired, uh, we've been taking inventory in there, you know, try to, we got stuff scattered all over.
I, I.
But if you go in there, we're not going to see what you're doing.
Oh, I'm.
We're gonna go take, try to take inventory.
But, okay, but now, starting time, because Gerald knows, I don't know if anybody else has been past my house, but I'm painting my house. I would like to get my house painted and I'll have in the afternoon, because I wanna work of a morning, eight till four. And if you go in, I don't care what you do, you're a councilman.
No, we're just.
I don't care.
Inventory. If you need something, you let us know too.
Oh, yeah, I will.
We will order it and get it in.
If we have the money, Frank. That's one of the problems.
And that, and so we know where we're going.
And we had set up committees to.
Yes.
But that was only to assist you if you on, uh.
Yeah, that's all.
If you had something you needed, you'd talk to the committee or at the workshop and we would, you know, maybe make a suggestion.
Even if you, even if you think you're gonna need it, we'll try to order it.
Okay. Can I ask the board, or Linda's not, don't know, and, and I'm not bad mouthing you, don't get me wrong, does any of the board members seen a maintenance logbook when that backhoe was greased? If you was over there whenever the line was being dug, you could hear it screeching.
I haven't found a maintenance nut in there.
But that's what I'm saying. They're supposed to be greased once every ten hours.
I don't see full maintenance on any.
Dave, I was trying to set up, uh, where we number the vehicles that we set up a maintenance schedule, but that would be, you know, if.
Yeah, that's fine, but I'll keep my own logbook too. I will have a, a binder, so I'll know. But there again, do I have to write down stop every hour? Because if I do, no wonder is it takes so long.
Isn't, don't think you, you base feed it into the computer? As far as I know, I don't think so.
I'll go back into, I'll go back into some of my paperwork. I've got it all. Of what Virgil done, what Derek done, and how they done it. Then I will go from that, if it's all right with this board. I want it all okay with the board, you know, because Virgil, he went to each well. He gave an account of each well, how much water was out of it. Derek done the same thing on his gas test. Has anyone been going out here to the gas meter and putting a dial indicator on it? Has any of the gas lines been checked?
Yeah.
That's what I did.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, that right there. I have a meeting September fourth, uh, with.
And I'm not trying to add to problem.
No, no, I have a meeting September fourth with, uh, the gas people, Black Hills and who else? City of Walsenburg. So if by chance you're hired, um, if you're not busy on September fourth, if you or.
That's my birthday. I ain't gonna be here. No, I'm totally. No, I'm totally, the seventh is my birthday.
Again?
Yeah.
You just had one last week.
Not September seventh, you ain't got here yet.
Jeez, I thought I wished you a happy birthday, but anyway.
You may have, I know.
September fourth, I have a meeting with them, so whoever gets hired, I would like for them to sit in on the meeting.
Oh, well.
And it's, um, inspection of the gas pipes in the community.
Yep, well, okay, yes, I would. Because I can go on and on with all kinds of questions. But that's all up to you all.
Dave, are you going to put in the water meters?
What's that?
Are you going to put in the water meters in, installing them?
Yes, I've done that before, but it was under Mike Long, you remember where Mike was here?
Right.
Yeah, Mike Long was here. And he was the supervisor, he carried the water license. So he stood there as long as he was there, I could put in all of the wa- yeah, I've installed all of them. Huh? Taps?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, no. Well, let me say this. Each one of them, each one of them lines has to have a CAD well done on it, which I'm certified in. But that's a whole new ballgame. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Joshua Lloyd. Hello.
Hi.
I thought he was Joshua Lloyd. Nope. Okay, let's start with, tell us a little bit about yourself and your experience.
Well, I'm pretty much a jack of all trades. Unlike Dave, he's got a hell of a lot more experience on backhoes and equipment than I do. Pretty much I'm small-time maintenance. Anything small-time I can do, anything that I'm shown, I can do. So, I just haven't been put into experiences like Dave has or any of these other maintenance people have. I've pretty much been working small-time jobs.
We seen you doing a lot of volunteer work on here also, cleaning, sweeping.
I have landscaping experience, painting experience, uh, building maintenance experience, uh, detailing experience, I, I mean, you pretty much name it, I've done it.
Well, isn't that one of your references?
No.
Should be.
I have a question, is this a one-person position or is this a two-person position? Are we hiring two or only hiring one?
Two.
Two?
Correct. And both are gonna be part-time for them? Two.
Okay.
Any questions?
What are your question for salary?
I put in there eighteen, I believe.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
I saw sixteen. You said it, how much?
In there, I put seventeen.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Oh, there it is.
Again, I'm not looking for a supervisor position. I'm not looking to supervise. I can do inventory, I can do landscaping, I can do small maintenance, I can, you know, you name it, I can do it. And if I don't, if I can't do it, I can always learn how to do it.
Would you be interested in getting a water license yourself?
Yes, sir.
Because it wouldn't hurt us having two licensed operators.
Yes, sir.
You have a valid Colorado driver's license.
I would have to switch over my Arizona to my Col- to Colorado.
But it's valid license.
It is a valid license, everything is valid on it, I have no tickets, no anything like that. Um, just, I would have to switch it over if you require a Colorado. If you don't, I would prefer to keep my Arizona because it doesn't expire until I'm sixty-five, so...
You're dual resident, aren't you?
I am, that's why I'm saying, I've got family that I have residency out there with, I also live out here, so I would prefer to keep my Arizona license because again, there's a more benefits to having my Arizona license than a Colorado license.
We would just need to double check, um, any insurance liability on our driving vehicle, but I don't see any, as long as it's a valid driver's license, I guess it'd have to be...
The only vehicle he couldn't use is the dump truck out there because it, it's air brake and it would require commercial license.
OCDL.
And that's not, that's not hard to get, air brake certification is not hard to get, I've had it before. I mean, I've had certifications, I've, I used to work on big rigs. I used to take the transmissions out, I used to, I used to take the rears out, rebuild them, put them back together. I mean, I know maintenance, auto maintenance, building maintenance. You know, again, I just, I've, I've had certifications, but as everybody on here knows, certifications expire, especially if you don't stay in the industry. So...
And would you be willing to work, um, like, you know, let's say if we brought on David on, would you be willing to work every other weekend? Would you all be willing to work with him and alternate those weekends?
Well, that's why I asked if this was a two-person position. I am willing to work the weekends, all the weekends, period. I'm willing to work the weekends so that way he doesn't have to. If we wanna split it up to where it's like fifteen-thirty, where I do the weekends, he does the week, or twenty-twenty, he does half a day, I do half a day, whatever, whatever. I mean, however the schedule works, but I have no problem working the weekends. I mean, especially if it's only like four hours a day, I mean, it's, it's really not much, it doesn't...
I've seen your work habits, you pay a lot of attention to details. Maintenance, that's a good thing.
Well, and like I said, I can come in, I can inventory everything for you guys. I, I mean, I'm pretty detailed on it.
Because, you know, especially on your organization, I can stand there and I can take notes on, you know, what is this, what is that, the wrong frame? But in the long run, it's gonna be the maintenance people who set the shop up.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so I'm pretty good with maintenance, I'm pretty good with organization. I mean, you, you've seen how I've worked, Gerald has seen how I've worked, I've been working on Dave's house, you all seen that, so...
Anybody else? Mr. Brown?
I like the arrangement, I mean, the, the, the willing to work together and, and whatever hours they work out, they're, they're good with that. I like that.
We'll have, uh, full coverage, you know, one, the other one comes in or whatever.
Will there be maintenance phone also for emergency calls?
Well, again, we can work out hours, he can work like the beginning of the week, I can work the weekends and, and the end of the week or something like that. We can always work the hours out. But that's, that's a later type thing.
You know, an on-call system too, for, you know, at nights, emergencies and, you know, somebody spring...
Well, and that's what, that's what the town phones are for, is for emergencies, always on, sitting next to the bed.
I know, you had something to say, Dave.
We have an emergency, there'll be calls others.
Right? We both live in town.
It's gotta get fixed.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, when we have damage, about it, it's got to be corrected mostly, because it's in the markets.
Well, whoever's got the phone would go out, find out what it is, contact the other, because it might just be something.
So what are we talking about? Because Dave did ask earlier too, when, when's the start date? Tuesday?
Well, I think first we have to make a motion.
Yeah, I just wanna kinda get it out there so they know.
I would say Tuesday would be fine, unless you're busy the weekend on evening.
This, yeah.
Yeah, so Burn's busy, so I guess Tuesday. Oh.
Yeah, I'd like to...
Wait, we have to do a drug test first.
Well, the council wants, I'll continue with what I'm doing until the drug test comes back.
How long, where did they go? And when?
I'm sorry, where did, I can't hear you, where did they go? Okay.
Did they go to Trinidad, it takes two days, so if the council decides on, this is the direction they wanna go, then maybe Friday?
Or?
To submit to a drug test, if that would be on...
We, we made one now, you all better not do that.
Now...
We're not qualified, Dave.
Right.
This Friday?
This Friday.
Is that what you want?
Fill this one.
So, are you available on Friday to go do a drug test?
So, then that way the results would be in for next week and you could do a start date of possibly Tuesday or Wednesday.
Now, who takes care of that? The town?
Dave. If we are scheduled on a Friday to go down there, we have to have a personnel who will take us. Because we can't drive ourselves legally.
And you, of course, Sarah, you know, probably gotta make an appointment.
We'll have to call tomorrow to see.
Sarah will call tomorrow and see and then I'll designate somebody to drive you. Not you, he was gonna say, I'll do it.
I got that.
I mean, just to make the other thing, we...
No, 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 that's fine.
You all still got a decision.
Right.
What with the state and with the Colorado, Los Angeles County, supervisor had to drive.
So we'll have our temporary supervisor that's been doing it all week. Do you have your pick, you have Burney, you have Frank or Buck?
No, I don't care.
Burney? Yeah.
I don't wanna get rid of it.
Burney's on, I got it.
Okay, let's move on and anything else?
Are you out of applications?
Yes.
Yeah, that was it.
That it? You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Personally, I like both of you, so this, I would make a note that we will hire both of us. We actually wanna do it separately.
Separate.
Make a motion, Dave, go ahead, as a higher as maintenance supervisor.
Bro, come.
Is that gonna be for the part-time to, for how many hours or whatever?
Twenty hours.
There's a...
I think that'll be looked down there.
Sorry, just a second. Who, who said?
Burney, Frank.
May I pro temp?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brohass?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Oh, Tony got a job.
One more, like, yeah, we're done.
We're done? Okay, well, no, I, I wanted to say, thank you, yes, but also Ben is Josh's. We've been hired evidently.
Wait, we haven't, let us know when we're hired.
I'd like to make a motion that we hire Joshua.
Oh, okay, but, okay, you might wanna change your mind, no, I'm good. I would, I would like to recommend as being voted for as a supervisor, that he can work for me with me for two or three days so that he can get to figure out what he needs to do on the weekend.
Sure.
Yeah, we could work that out.
No problem.
I'd like to make a motion that we hire Joshua.
Wait. Go ahead.
When we're finished, what is the period?
Twenty-one.
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 Josh is...
Seventeen. Buck said fourteen-fifty.
Well, I know, you look at me and you...
Seventeen, correct.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I was...
Seventeen. Wait.
With the same conditions on the raise.
I mean, they haven't voted.
Same here.
Same major issue on the raise, it's like get all my certification.
I, I wanna make sure that everyone here heard that, you know?
Right.
With the dollar raise after probation and dollar if he gets his water license.
But when do we cut him on ninety days probation?
Thirty-two, well, after they pass their drug test.
Yeah.
You know, they're gonna be part-time.
Yeah, we gotta go, get a cut.
Okay.
Hey, Sharon.
May I pro temp?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brohass?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Welcome aboard, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Welcome aboard. Um, now we're all gone with utility. So let's move on to water calling.
I understand, are we talking about the gentleman we're taking the load out there late? You know, on that, as, as a board member, I would think that be a little bit more comfortable if we got legal advice on this.
'Cause I understand it, what little bit I've heard, he has, he has paid for the water, so it's up, up to us provide the water, is that the way I understand it?
He paid for the tap, yes.
He paid for the tap, so it's up to us. And so what does it take to, what is the issue why his, is he able well?
Mauricio well, we have to get it running.
Okay.
Burn, that means, that we were instructed by the people that were here from the water, what, what's that?
I have one.
Anyway, just do, we're, we are over the amount of water that we can generate out of our wells that, and I've got a paper in my pickup that I can show you. Mauricio cannot come online.
Unless, but since we exceeded our water consumption.
Tremendously. I mean... But the man has the tap already and he's got the sewer already, look. I'm not sure.
I, I, I understand that, Burney, but the state also has laws that we have to follow. And, and that is one of them that was brought up on Friday. And it was about the Mauricio well. It has to be disconnected when we exceed a certain amount of water. And the town of Bangle has exceeded.
More than double, well, we're allowed to exceed more than double.
We are over the limit.
Well, probably for three weeks didn't help, I know.
But we understand that, but that's water on the bridge. I actually called the school yesterday and asked them if they would cede salt out of our watering. And Mr. Town said, okay, I just, I told him the same thing, that we have exceeded the water.
And now, personally, if it was me and I got charged three thousand dollars for a tap, if you cut my water off, I'd want my three thousand dollars back. He's done nothing wrong.
We didn't say that, Burney.
That's, I'm just...
I mean, we're trying, you know... I mean, we're trying, you know.
I'm not trying to make an argument, I just said personally I.
We're trying to resolve this water issue. I mean, I'm going by what the state mandates. I didn't just get up and decide this is how it was going to be. Can you help us out? That would you remotion me?
Yes. If that well is pumped, already pumped, a million gallon, that's all it might be allowed to pump. And if we went over a million gallon.
What pump?
The Mauricio well.
It hasn't, is that the one that's broken, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it hasn't even pumped.
And if it's pumped a million gallon and we're only allowed by the state so much water out of that well.
If not, it's not necessarily that one.
Total rights.
And.
It's total, all the wells, all the wells.
Yeah.
But there's, there's also a galley up there, two galleys, I don't know if you know that that's a site to wonder or not.
That's mentioned in that.
And.
Right?
Right.
It's match, it's mentioned in the mandate, Dave. Mauricio well plus the, the.
The galley.
Galley.
Yes, it's all on mandate because it's under surface water. And it, it's one of them things, it can go either way. But if we go ahead and finish the well and put it back online. The state's going to come in here and say, hey, we're shutting it off right there.
That is exactly what we're trying to avoid. Um, I think this water hauling situation, I think we should get some legal advice on it. That's my recommendation, so that we know where we're at.
That's what Vernon said with this.
And, and that way we're going to be doing things right.
Have we put any RFPs up for an attorney for the town?
No, um. Vernon has a couple of, what, three?
Has three on the list of recommendations that. But at the time was going presented to the board.
Did you, that's on your punch list?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll, we're going to have the table of the water hauling so we can address this legally.
So it's seventy-five dollars a week that we're paying to haul water to them?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five a week?
Yes.
Versus forty-five.
I thought it was two hundred, is that the living?
It's one sev, it's one seventy-five per load, so they're calling every time they take two loads every other Monday, so it's like three something.
So one seventy-five times two then, so three hundred.
Water are they hauling to them?
A thousand gallons a week.
So two thousand every, so they're, they're doing it twice a month, so it's two thousand each time, so four thousand twelve for the month.
For the month, yep.
You guys do the meter readings, what's like the average use of water for just, is the average person in town, how many gallons are they using?
Depends on the household size.
There's a minimum of three thousand gallons.
What, allocated or kind of estimated for each house or?
Yeah, whenever, whenever you pay your water bill, it's, it's based on three thousand gallons per household and then there's an extra charge going over that.
Anything after that is your charge for it.
Okay, so it's not, um, not excessive that he's getting, he's getting an extra that, I mean, we know how quick water can go. So it's not excessive, but it is definitely costing us a lot to do that.
And I think they monthly average three to four thousand a month is what's showing, that goes through their meter. And what's going through their meter is what we're hauling in, but it's like three to four thousand every month, they very rarely go over the.
Do they evidently have a system that they dump this water in?
Yeah. And they do pay their forty-five or forty-seven fifty.
The overage?
Um, every month they pay the minimum charge, so for every thousand you go over, um, the three thousand, it's two dollars and fifty cents for each additional thousand.
Is that the living water?
Or fifteen seventy-five?
Uh huh.
Yes, that was, um, they hadn't been paid in I don't know how long, we didn't have the funds and when they finally called, that's the amount we owe them.
That's as of six twenty-eight. And then what's this on eight thirteen, another two hundred and fifty, so is that the current balance? I, I don't understand these.
What you guys are looking at there is, I know I need to get bills approved, so I gave you guys, this is basically everything I have for accounts payroll right now. So the first sheet that you're looking at, that one, everything highlighted in yellow is what has been paid, the checks there, those have been paid.
Okay, yellow was, okay.
Everything highlighted in pink is what I'm asking to get approved. We don't have the funds for all this stuff. But as we get the funds, these are the things that I need to get paid, so we don't get these trudged off. And, and that first sheet there stapled together, all them checks I've printed, those have all been printed. Some of them have been signed by Donald when he was here previously, they may need to be reprinted, I'm not sure.
So yellow means it's been printed, it hasn't necessarily been paid.
No, yellow means it's been printed and paid.
And paid?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So then the next sheet that you have stapled together that looks like this one, these are what I currently have entered into assist. These are what we owe, I have not printed any of them, so none of those have been paid, but the highlighted pink ones are things that are entered that we need to figure out how to pay them.
Okay, uh, well, yeah, we'll get to that, we'll, we'll have to come back to that, we're kind of getting, I just wanted to double check on that water. So that fifteen seventy-five has been paid and then, so this two hundred and fifty that's owed to them. On eight thirteen, that's been printed or been paid?
It's been paid if it's in yellow.
In yellow, so that's paid on eight thirteen, okay. And then, so are they, they're totally current then?
Yeah, uh, so they probably will be calling Tuesday for the next two weeks worth of.
Okay. Okay.
And basically they just call in on the Monday when they've got two loads taken and we give them a debit card over the phone.
Okay. Okay, all right, I just wanted to see what we owe them.
And then the very last sheet is payroll, um, I did a mock payroll for what I know, basically everybody's hours are after on their.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to that, their approval of bills, I just wanted that water, uh, what the balance was on that water for that person. So it looks like we've got some other agenda items before we get to the bills. So it looks like we just need to keep paying that three hundred and fifty dollars a month. For the time being until we get legal counsel. What's? Okay, well, yeah, we're not on the bills yet. Okay, that's, cause that's been paid already, anything in yellow has been paid, this is coming due, this is coming due, so.
This, this is.
Annual things, okay. Okay, all right, I'm, I'm sure Lex said that we'll get there.
So we will keep paying living water until we get legal counsel on it.
Am I hearing right or adding right, but it's, they're getting paid, they're paying a hundred and seventy-five dollars for one thousand gallons? The town.
Two thou, two thousand gallons.
Two thousand gallons or one thousand? It's one thousand gallons, a hundred and seventy-five dollars. So you're not paying them three hundred and fifty a month, you're paying them seven hundred and five dollars.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Okay, I guess, I just asked and then I said two thousand gallons, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, then you confirmed that.
So, so two thousand gallons, they do have one thousand this week, one thousand the following week, so when we pay them, we're paying them two weeks at a time, but each load is about a hundred and seventy-five. So for two thousand gallons, we're paying three hundred and forty dollars roughly.
Okay.
Um, every two weeks.
Three hundred and forty dollars every two weeks?
So for four thousand gallons, they're, we're, we're paying like seven hundred dollars a month for their water and they are paying the town.
Forty-five dollars.
Forty-five dollars.
Does, does that, do we, does the town own a water tank that we can go fill up at the water station ourselves in Trinidad and haul this water to him? That'd be cheaper to buy one at this point, how much does a water tank cost?
Those big totes, I, you know, there's a place in Denver comes into the Colorado Springs and I bought several of them from the food grade with the metal around them. And they were a hundred and fifty dollars a piece and they're five hundred gallon totes.
Five hundred gallon, and so that water station, it's what, twenty-five cents a gallon at the water station? Three cents on the, on the big, because I know on the smaller totes, it's twenty-five cents a gallon when you're.
Bulk, the water sales, it's three cents a gallon.
At the water station? Uh, okay.
When they were hauling water, do you know what they were charging for automation time when they were hauling water?
I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
So, and you said five hundred gallons on those tanks?
Two fifty a tank, yeah, they have two tanks.
Yep, two, so two, so, but so five hundred total at three cents, we're talking fifteen dollars, is that right?
Right.
Yes.
So something to think about.
But the thing is we gotta go buy.
Yeah, I'd have to go buy two tanks.
Yeah, you look at three hundred dollars.
Would it, then would they fit in the, that new truck that we bought?
I'm pretty sure we have a tank because at one point, one of our utility workers was hauling water to people down Tremetto's. When that, they didn't have that water line for several months. I'm pretty sure we have a tank and I'm sure hopefully the truck can haul it, but legally, I don't know if that would be possible if the towns.
And was him on the water, so we could refill the totes here.
We're using.
He pays for water from us.
On, on the letter, one of the ones I was reading about, um, we're not allowed to do any of that water.
We're not selling, I mean, it's already.
Yeah, we're selling it.
It's already sold though.
But there is, no, we can't, because if we start that Vernon, then everybody else is going to see and they're going to say, well, you did it for somebody else.
Well, he hasn't.
And we're already exceeding our water usage as it is.
We are. I mean, they were, they were pretty upset on Friday and asking them, I said, we have two employees. Where there is no enforcement, you know, who's going to go enforce it? Okay, so where are we at with water hauling then? Are we going to table that?
I would say, yeah, we need legal counsel on it, but yeah, we have to. Table till.
Our workshop.
Our workshop meeting on the week of the month?
I'm sorry, we can't make a decision, vote on it?
No, but we can have the special meeting after the workshop.
Okay.
Take into consideration, Vernon, it's one thing to buy the, the totes. It's another thing, have to go to Trinidad? Cause when it burns gas, you gotta pay someone, you know, you, you got more than fifteen dollars.
Yeah, but I mean, it's still going to be less than eight hundred dollars.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, obviously there's other expenses.
And that's why I was asking about your, so, now, he's already on our system.
I know what you're saying and I can agree with that, but I, I realize they're on our.
They are, and because in, in reality, we would be using more water, this way it's coming from somewhere else.
Okay, and like he was saying, and I caught that part, it's just added expense going down there.
Right, and because the tanks are smaller, you know, we can only do five hundred, you know, um.
Are they doing it every month?
Four thou, four thousand gallons. Yeah, so you're talking, yeah, you know, at least a couple of trips, but I still think even a couple of trips with the gas, you know. If we have one tank, the cost of a second tank, if we have to keep doing this for a while, I still think we could probably save at least. Probably four hundred, five hundred a month on this and like right now, we're, you know, trying to save every single penny that we have, so. Uh, to me, it just seems like, you know, i- if we're trying to find solutions, it seems like it could be a viable solution.
Now, why are we all in four thousand gallons to them when the city, the people that live in town are only, can only get three thousand?
No, no, they can get one left.
You can get all the water you want, but you're going to pay.
You're going to pay, you're going to pay for it. You're going to pay for it.
Yeah, but they are, they are paying for it. She said that anything that they're going over the three thousand, they are paying that difference. So they're paying the same that we're getting, it's just get them the water, it's costing us a lot more to get them the water, so.
And something else maybe to look at is that they're not the only person on that line, other people are on that line, but they're not having water hauled in, they've been told sorry until the wells up and running, pre account provides water.
And they're doing their own, correct?
Um, yes, I was, I don't know what they're doing for water.
Why is this one?
I know, I know the place above the place that they're hauling water to has their own river. This is closer to the creek from the house.
Dave, Dave, do you know what Don, what is he doing for water up there?
Don Deckman, coming down off a Mauricio well, first customer is you. Don Deckman has his personal well.
He's got a well.
He's got a dug well.
That's where they're hauling water to?
No, to Aaron, he's hauling. The second house.
Okay.
On that line. As it comes on down through there, there's another line that goes to Bob's Lodge. There's another line, I believe, I'm not going to say for sure, it's a new guy that, there's a little red house, they bought some property there. And they've got a windmill down there and I don't know if they dug well, because there haven't been any taps from the tap. That's why I'm saying he's got his own well. I'm just speculating now, but then, then Don, down there, they've got wells on that property too. Down there where Bob owns.
Yeah.
It's a lodge.
Yeah.
There's wells there and so you have to come all the way across the road and that ties in with Trehio Creek, Mauricio. Elizabeth Wells, all three of the trump, trump wells. And let's see, there's one. Prairie West is.
Prairie West caved in or something, didn't it?
It caved in whenever, whenever, uh. What's the name up there out of Wassenberg, whoever water was trying to get it fixed, Mike was the mayor. And they, they collapsed the well, nothing was ever done with it and it's just sitting there. We're not, we're not getting a drop of water off of it, just sitting there. And that well with the Mauricio well and the Trehio Creek well, with them three, just them three wells running, we never did even use these trump wells.
Well, this, because I don't know the answer to this, I'm going to have to ask you, if we found someone up there with the well, did we not buy water from them and transport it a short distance?
Do we need to treat the water?
Do you think?
Do we need to treat the water? Morning. If we did it from their way?
Yeah.
You still got the conflict of interest, because you're hauling for one.
Right.
And the surrounding people that's on any line is not going to like it.
All right, he was just.
This is where I, I really think that this should be looked at by an attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
This, I, we can play with this all night long and we're not going to come to a resolution. My suggestion to the council is to table this till, I don't know if we're going to have another special meeting or.
Let's say schedule, like you said, do a sc, a special meeting after the workshop.
And then by that time, hopefully I will have an answer to this water hauling question.
Do you want me to get information on it?
Thank you.
And just one question, so I'm. Now, we're okay to, we're okay to pay the living water then until you make a final decision?
Uh, we'll get to that when we get to the bills, the people of the bills, I would say.
Can I get a motion to table this till? The next meeting on September twelfth?
Who's going to table it, uh, water hauling until September twelfth?
Second.
You're approaching?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Town judge.
This is where we talked about just only paying him if he actually does something for us and get him off that two hundred and fifty dollars a month that we're paying now.
Yes. Yes, I think as needed, I think Stephanie or Sarah mentioned that since we don't have law enforcement, that we don't have, he, when's the last time he's been here?
For me?
Probably. So last year?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, last year.
Is there, is there a con- is there a contract in place?
Who is the judge?
Who is the judge?
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I don't.
Do we, anyone pay him two hundred and fifty dollars for somebody we don't know with judges?
I, I don't personally know, I haven't had to deal with him, so.
Last name is.
Who is the judge?
Garcia.
Garcia.
John Garcia, John Trinidad.
John Garcia from Trinidad.
Um, yeah, I think we need to find if there's a contract for him somewhere, a vendor file for him.
One of the things that we did, when we talked, we did counsel, we had a goal school and we changed different positions, we, we need to do is turn around and not retain him.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we need to look and see if there's a contract and just let them know that, you know, if there's a contract that, you know, we're paying him two hundred and fifty dollars a month and we have to revise that contract, we need to know.
We voted to retain him for another year.
In April, so we needed to make a motion to, like you said, unretain him or.
I, I don't.
I did, so. And also, I don't know if the statutory count is bound by any law that says we have to.
We have to have one on retention.
That might be something also to get legal advice.
I think, I mean, we probably have to retain an attorney and retain, uh, law enforcement and. Okay, then.
Table that too, till we find out.
I think we're gonna have to take, make a motion to table that one until we see if we have a contract or, and that was gonna be September twelfth.
Yep.
Motion to table town judge.
Second.
Brokaw?
Chair Puchan?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahas?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Furlough hours, town hall, library.
We've been saying that we don't have any money to ban everybody like we have to ban, so we gotta do something. We gotta cut our costs somewhere. So, the only thing to do is to furlough people. Any arguments or comments or anything to mention?
Any comments?
I think, you know, it's been mentioned to me, you know, for each of, you know, Stephanie and Sarah on twenty hours a week, uh, temporarily. And didn't somebody mention temporarily closing the library?
Yeah, and I see this in there, was there something in this that tells us that we can't do it? I, we got, I just got this, so it's.
I don't know what you're reading, but.
The, uh, library.
The library page, our goal is to ensure your residents have access to quality library services to this end.
Cause it looks like there's some kind of grant to pay the libraries, right, librarians.
So, understood, where is that grant money?
They have it.
Oh, it has nothing to do with money.
No, no, I'm just saying, you know, I, I was looking at a lot of paperwork and it says, you know, this was budgeted for this, and then when it's all, when they take it, it has a balance, but where is that balance is what I'm asking, and I mean, I get that.
It had to go with everything else that's there, uh, and. If I can find the.
So then we can move Sarah and Stephanie to the library?
We get paid like, something like, yeah, here it is. Uh, number two. The entire list of thirteen requirements for Colorado Public Library makes library your district eligible for for a thousand five hundred dollars annually in state funds. So have we collected that and can we close, are we able to close the library? Well, we got, if we got federal money to keep it open.
The one that you have right there.
And all the stuff on the library, the librarian actually brought it in yesterday and according to her, in whatever paperwork she left, she said that there is something in there that says they can't close or they have to be open at least twenty hours a week or they'll start losing their state funding. So she said right now, that's what they're open, they're only open twenty hours a week. So if, I guess, we went on furlough or they had to close for more time, she said that they're gonna be losing the state funding.
Not necessarily, because we can move you girls to the library too to pick up your hours, right?
You know, I was talking to Pat. At one time, the librarian was also strictly a volunteer.
That's, you know, when I moved here, if I'm not mistaken, that's how that library was run and it was through volunteers.
So maybe we need to bring that up at the workshop, uh, you know, put the word out for the workshop that we're looking for volunteers for the library, maybe?
Well, according to this, would we be responsible to pay back this forty-five hundred dollars if we closed it? Or did we even receive it?
Well, where does it at? This is state.
Well, it went into any of the funds, the councils voted over a period of times, several times.
Well, the library, they have their whole own board and their own finances, so any like funding that the library gets goes to.
Them directly, doesn't it come through our funding, our, our general fund or anything?
No.
Did you hear that, Irlanda? What? That the library gets their own funding, has their own books and everything, so if there's any of that funding that came in, like that forty-five hundred dollar, uh, grant or whatever, it goes right into their books, it didn't run through our general fund or anything.
And I'm guessing they have their own boards because Loby had said yesterday, her and the board was primed to be here for this meeting tonight, but they couldn't make it.
Give another copy of this?
Mayor?
Oh, wait. Yes, sir, I'm listening. Did you take some?
No comments to the audience, but we have a stop to do.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, if you guys do want volunteers, I'm sure, I mean, like, I'd volunteer.
We're both willing to volunteer.
If you guys need volunteers for the library, I'm sure you can get them, because I volunteer my weekends.
And as would I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, man, the way that we're going now, this, it looks like that this is, everyone is just guessing on this. There's another thing we should probably ask you, because are we, okay, so this goes into their fund, yet the town's responsible to pay them?
But, does it go, I, I'm not.
Do we pay, so we, are we paying payroll?
Yeah, we do, we pay for their payroll, their.
I don't understand.
They have their own board, their own.
Yeah, why are we paying their payroll?
Why do the town in Baguio learn?
Pay their payroll.
No, I'm just.
Well, you think your wife is working there, maybe it's up to you guys.
Um, it, it's, it's kind of like the housing, they have their own board, they have their own, and they pay, but yet their budgets and everything run, you know, they have to go from here, but I'm not understanding where the library.
Here's the problem with this, this is something we, you know, it, this is something that was just put on the table tonight. There was, there's links on here that explain everything we're asking, so.
Well, again, I will just ask the board to table this and I will once again look into this, okay?
And we're gonna have to make sure that these things come up at the next meeting.
They will.
Because the last councils have not followed through with this, so I wanna make sure that this.
We'll figure out where they're getting paid. Wait, we're gonna figure out where they're gonna, they're getting paid?
I know.
And how it's gonna be run, because right now, we're gonna pay them out of an account that we don't have any money earning.
I know, and but.
This is what I'm trying to say.
Just point of respect, I don't cut you off, I would appreciate the same respect.
Okay, say what you have to say.
Again.
Can I get a motion to, um, just the library, what are we gonna do with, uh, since they were both together? The town.
What do you mean?
Well, furlough hours, town hall, library, so we make a motion on town hall?
Well.
And table the library?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yes.
Agreed, make motion and we split the two up. Vote on them separately.
Second, before you vote, when will this take effect?
Beginning next pay period.
September?
Well, I don't know when the next.
When's the next pay period?
Actually, um, Wednesday, so Friday being that Monday's a hol- a holiday, I need to do payroll Friday. So we get paid Wednesday, so payroll starts to get on Monday.
How did your pay period run? Is it every week or every two weeks?
Two weeks, yes. So the last one was eight twenty-one, I think, so now we're September fourth, I believe, is the next one, is every other Wednesday.
Next week.
Yeah.
So you said eight twenty-one, so when?
And then the next one would be nine four. So the.
So but when, when's the ending of the pay period?
Sunday.
So it's the eighteenth, so it was, um, so the fourth through the eighteen, or the fifth through the eighteenth was your pay period?
Yes, that's what the calendar showing it.
So Monday, the fif- so it runs Monday through Sunday.
Yeah.
Monday from two weeks prior to that Sunday.
Yep.
So, and then there's actually two months out of the year, you're getting free payrolls out of that.
Yeah.
Right. So then, okay, so the new pay period started the nineteenth, um, which would run through September first or payday on the fourth?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so the ending of the pay period.
Is the first. Is the first.
Is the first. Okay, so, um, the beginning of the new pay period is second, which is a holiday. Are we paying holidays? You guys get paid holidays? Well, that's actually the start, so I think, yeah, it would start, um, so for paying holidays, is that gonna be part of the twenty hours that they're each getting then? Or do they only get paid four hours in holiday?
It seems like they've been here long enough that the holiday should stay as a full day, you know, there's, how many years you been here?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, you know, it's, I would say any holiday like through this period, they get their full pay.
Well, but the holiday doesn't fall until the next pay period, the start of the new pay period when we're talking about starting the furlough.
Okay, I have a question. So if we start this immediately with, that's what it's sounding like, what's that gonna do to the first of the month? The billing?
Mm-hmm.
What's going?
I mean, that, that's the whole thing, I mean.
Wait, wait, what's going to happen to the training?
Yeah, I know, and that's another, I mean, I haven't really been on board with the furloughs at all, actually, because we're already running these two ragged. Um, in my opinion, we can't afford not to have them here full time, but that's my opinion.
And how do you think?
It's just gotta be part of the budget, it's part of, you know, the punch list, it's part of, you know, getting emergency funding that, you know, um, I sent some options to Irlanda last night, you know, banks willing to do municipal loans, some other grants that are out there, um, we need to call, um, the county, you know, and, and negotiate with this treasurer and be like, look, you know, we've, we're spending, you know, upwards of a hundred and forty thousand dollars to get these audits done, and we can't get them done, you know, what are we supposed to do? Um, you know, even at this point on my punch list, we have to really look at the option of filing bankruptcy. Town filing, you know, bankruptcy. Um, you know, I, I, if the girl, sorry, the, we, these ladies are willing to work, but understand that maybe payroll might be a little bit late sometimes, you know, while we're scrambling, um, they've already, you know, been flexible enough that, you know, the, a couple payrolls ago, they only got half their payroll, you know, they understand that, you know, they just gotta work with us on it. Um, I don't think we can afford, there's too much to be done, done.
If, if, if this is like that, if we're planning on getting that audit, um, the audit, whatever we're doing, for twenty twenty-three into the computer, we're going to need them here.
Well, it's not the audit, it's rebuild, basically rebuilding the books. Twenty, twenty, we're gonna need them there, not to mention, you know, I mean, there's cora requests coming in, um, on my punch list. What, we need to figure out the state budgets, those have not been submitted the last two years. And as I understand it, there's some funding that can be released if those state budgets are done. So, I mean.
Can we take a ten minute break?
Y'all okay with the ten minute break?
Yeah.
Or you wanna go home?
Boy, shit, we start at four thirty in the morning.
Ten minute break it is. Recession.
You're a favor?
Yeah, I was just.
You kinda look like you were mean, are you?
Oh, I, I say okay.